Good evening, everyone.
What are you doing? Nothing right now.
We on? Yeah, we're on.
Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 14th at 6:30. Please stand for our invocation and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we give you thanks for this day that you've given to us and the opportunity we have to serve you in our various ways. We ask for your blessings upon those who deliberate today, especially that this would be for the betterment of our community and the world in which we live. Help us to be faithful, help us to be giving, help us to care through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Mr. Hardaway, would you lead us in a pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Vice President Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Spann. Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Sixth president, we have a quorum. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We are honored tonight to have the swearing-in ceremony for Officers Jacob Shrewsbury, Timothy Michaels, and Philip Mason. Chief Newses?
Yes.
Do you have the swearing-in documents?
I have.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judge. Come on up, please.
Well now.
Judge Eugene Velasco. I didn't see you, Judge. You look camouflaged.
Trying to say your little brother.
So guys, please come up and stand behind the table and face the audience that way. Same with the officers. And please use the microphone. Yeah, just the judge on that side.
Gentlemen, would you identify each of you?
Timothy Michaels.
Jacob Shrewsbury.
Philip Mason.
Gentlemen, please repeat after me. I.
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 Say your name.
Philip Mason.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And honestly.
Honestly.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a police officer of the Maryville Police Department of the town of Maryville.
As a police officer of the Maryville Police Department of the town of Maryville.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my skills.
And the best of my skills.
And ability, so help me God.
And ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chief Newses, would you like to say a couple words? Wherever you'd like. You're the chief.
Just to give a little bit of an introduction to the newly sworn officers, Jacob Shrewsbury is one of our new guys. He's from, originally from Lake Station, is a River Forest graduate. He's going to be attending the academy here shortly, and as soon as he does that, he'll be on the road. The other two are former Maryville officers, and being in the police business right now is kind of a rough time. You're not getting applicants like we used to, but I was very happy that these guys came back along, and they're bringing back quite a bit of experience and making it easier for us because nobody really wants to be the police anymore, so I'm happy to have everybody back aboard.
Great, thank you, Chief. And congratulations again, officers, and probably the most important thing is, just be careful out there. So Chief, I guess Officer Nicholas Inhurt couldn't make the meeting tonight. Do you want to explain? And we're going to do that a different time?
Yes, if possible, we can do that at the next meeting. He had issues with childcare.
Okay, thank you. Moving on tonight to the Waste Management two-year option contract renewal. We discussed this in a workshop at great length. We need to approve the option four, which is our last two-year contract extension, I'm sorry, option three, which is April 1st through March 31st of 2024. And option four, it is both, April 1st through March 31st of 2025. Mr. Svetinoff, do we just need a simple motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. White for approval of the two-year option for waste management. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Also tonight, I want to ask for a motion to add to the agenda a BZA action. This would have, in regards to the Crossroads Plaza. It didn't make the first agenda, and I just want to make sure we're covered, and we will add that under BZA and large gathering actions.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Minchuck to add this item to the agenda. Open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable, register voucher approval for March 14th, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes, February 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committee reports, budget and finance, Mr. Hardaway.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Street department, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, sir, I have two contacts here from Hubinger Landscaping. One is in reference to the planters at 93rd Avenue. They went ahead and did all the spring cleanup, did all the upkeep on them. That bill came to $3,169.00. The second was for the, all the planters here at the town hall to upkeep those as well. As far as what any other, anything else that needed to be done with them, that total came to be $2,663.00.
So these are actually contracts, right, Mr. Minchuck?
That is correct.
For the future, for this year?
That is correct.
So, did you have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve both.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Hardaway for approval of the Hubinger contracts for this year. Open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You guys are easy tonight. Anything else on the street department?
I got one thing, Mr. President. I think that, you know, when we changed around the committees, I think utilities falls under the street department now.
We actually removed that.
Yeah, but, so, I guess I'm just going to go with it for right now.
Oh, okay.
All right. Last Wednesday, we had a meeting, our team, including consultants from Robinson Engineering, we've taken the lead seeking options to address infiltration and inflow which impacts Maryville residents in Meadowland and Meadowdale. Last Wednesday, we had a productive meeting with the EPA Director of the Office of Waste Water Management. Guy's name is Dr. Andrew Sawyers, and his staff to discuss our goals, including our interest in having a logistics, Gary sanitary, logistics, Gary sanitary district would have to be a primary applicant since this is their infrastructure, and we can be a supportive partner. To move this effort forward, we concluded that our best option is to look at the Indiana State Revolving Funds Loan Program. Therefore, we have set up a meeting with Jeff McGough, Indiana Finance Authority Director of Environmental Programs, this Friday at 10:00 a.m. to get all details regarding the SRF program. Once we have a pathway to funding, we can coordinate with Gary representatives to present our proposal to move forward. Basically, what this is saying, Mr. President, is that we are really looking at getting this problem rectified in the north end of Maryville. It's been far too long, and the residents have suffered far too long, and now we've got the ear of the federal EPA and the state EPA, so therefore, we should see some traction now, and hopefully Gary will be willing to come onboard and help us resolve these sewer backup issues.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
You said you had removed the utilities from the street department, is that what it was?
It's still there, we're just going to call it street department now. Remember, we had this conversation, instead of public works? We really don't have public works.
So utilities, I'm not quite understanding what the utilities are. When I read in the bylaws, I didn't see anything about the utilities being part of sewer management. I think they probably fall a little bit more on the environmental, since that's what we all have, having environmental laws, they're governing these things, so I'd like for in the future to think, because this is the first time I heard about the meeting, I'd like to make sure that I understand what's going on, so we can tell people.
All right.
Thank you.
Elections, public relations, and town beautifications, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Environmental affairs, Mr. White.
Mr. President, I just want to say, in terms of the COVID standards right now, everything's, seems to be, continues to be stable. Our CDC levels, according to the CDC, our levels are low. I haven't seen any, hate to say the words, mortality rates is probably a better word for it. I think we're just, even though I've ran into people, as soon as yesterday, actually, they said, hey, don't come close to me because I got COVID, I'm like, thank you. So, it's still out there, and, but right now, I think we're, we're stable here in this part of Lake County. Thank you.
Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess this is to the council, if you had an opportunity, look at the applications for the Assistant Parks Director. Still waiting on response from all you guys, Mr. White, including you. So, did you guys look at them?
To be honest with you, I haven't, but whatever your recommendation is, I will.
Well, okay, well, I'd like to get something, at least four from each one of you guys, and then we'll look at that, and then we'll make a decision as to who we want to interview.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Minchuck. Please let the record show that Mr. Spann has joined us now at 6:44. Hi, Don.
Hi.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, sir. As far as the FOP contract is concerned, both parties have come to a full agreement, and we are ready for the public signing, which will be scheduled for our next town meeting on the 28th.
Excellent.
Two more things. Congratulations to our new officers, and I see we have in the audience today Commissioner Ward, and it's his birthday, so we'd like to wish you a happy birthday, Gene. I'm not going to say how old he is.
That was just giving me the ass how old is Mr. Ward.
There you go, there you go.
Chief, could you arrest him for lying? That's not his age. No way.
That is all, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minchuck. Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, we had a redevelopment commission workshop before this meeting, got an overview of where we stand financially with all the tax increment finance districts, the Maryville Road TIF, the Broadway Amerplex TIF, and the Mississippi Street TIF District. We instructed, there's one project out of the Maryville Road TIF that we are going to move forward on, and instructed our financial advisor, Bob Swentz, to start preparing financial documents, and that would be 86th Avenue between Maryville Road, or the stub there into Hunter's Glen, and connecting it to the Williamsburg Development, so you would have a continuous run of 86th Avenue between Maryville Road and Broadway, so we'll be working on those documents. We also talked about a couple other funding options with the dog park, with the school grant that we're engaging in with Maryville School Corporation, and then also funding on the community center. So, as Bob gives us information back, I think we're going to have those items on the council workshop agenda in two weeks.
Correct. Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes, Mr. President. I am looking forward to the spring cleanup with the parks that will include the mowing, and we should be getting a roof on the shelter at Rosenbaum Park, but so far, everything else is okay with the parks and the bike trail, but the park department will be out there to check on it, and that's about it for now, so thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Moving on to abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Had a slight, small conversation with Mr. Reardon today, and one of our major problems is people not paying their garbage bills. And the majority of the people that aren't paying are, have been identified as renters, and so what I've instructed Mr. Reardon to do, rather than going after the renters personally, is go after the owners of those homes, as opposed to the renters, because the owners are the ones that are ultimately responsible for garbage pickup. So if we go after them, then we should be able to resolve this issue, because we met with Waste Management a couple weeks ago, and we are like in the country, one of the top municipalities where people don't pay their bills, and I think that that's just a horrible reputation for us to have, size, because of our size. So I'd like to make sure that Mr. Reardon follow up on that, and we'll go after the homeowners as opposed to the renters, and Pat, see if we can't get some traction that way. Thank you.
And we also have people that are not taking the garbage cans back up. 73rd Avenue by the apartment buildings, they leave their garbage cans up for two or three days, and different people are calling me on that, so we should check on that, too.
Chief, can you make sure that as we do whatever we need to do, that send out, because I think you, well, you've got Ray and Tiffany, I don't know which areas they got, in Barb. I think Ray's my end of town, and Tiffany is middle, I think, and then Barb.
Barb is south, yes.
Yeah, so can we just make sure that as they ride through their respective areas, that they identify these people, and just make sure that they start calling, bringing in their garbage cans after garbage pickup?
Sure. Councilwoman Yuzlak, was it the apartments that this was a problem at, or was it actual residents?
Apartments.
Okay.
73rd Avenue Apartments.
Mm-hmm.
All the way to the end.
Okay.
Chairman Hardaway, I'd like to add to a statement. I think some of this came about specifically for me, I talked to Pat yesterday, I got three calls. When I get three calls, I know it's a serious problem out there, and I do appreciate the town of Maryville picking it up the first time, which was last Friday. By Monday, it was looking the same again.
What are you talking about, Leonard? Give us a little.
I'm talking about like with the garbage.
Just in general?
Yes.
Okay.
And they picked it up, and this lady says, well, I just happened to kind of ride past, and I seen her coming out, and I said, ma'am, you can't put garbage on the ground. She says, well, can I go get another garbage can? So anyways, to make a long story short, I know exactly what Richard's talking about when we're talking about these people that don't take care of their property. So my suggestion would be is that we reach out back to Waste Management. If people haven't paid their bill, we need to tag that, so we'll know that they didn't pay, and then we'll know how to go to the next step. Sometimes, they might pay their bill and steal, just putting out double-double garbage, so I just wanted to add to, maybe we can ask Waste Management if people don't have service to tag it, that they don't have it. Thank you.
So, Mr. White, you may recall that when we had our workshop session and actually met with Waste Management representatives, they're going to provide us now with a monthly report.
Okay.
That'll have the name and address of the delinquent accounts.
Sure.
We know, we can let code enforcement know.
So how do we actually stop people, if the garbage cans are still out there? I think maybe Waste Management, if the service has been gone for 30 days, they need to pull that garbage can, because they all, people will continue to use it, and Waste Management might ride past and they say, well, they don't have, you know, services, so we'll keep on going. However, it does make the community look a little worse than, than we like, so I was just bringing that to Richard's attention as well, to kind of see if we can tag them. But you're saying that they don't have to tag them? Well, just.
They have a, they have a system in place already.
They've got computers in their lap, in their trucks, and they know who hasn't paid, and that's why they just ride past those houses. They don't, you know.
And they notify the owner.
Right.
Yes. And you know, my issue was, the community don't know that they did that, so I'm.
Oh, yeah.
So what do, what do I do, other than take those calls and give it to Pat? I'll let Pat get the airfoil that he got yesterday.
Well, I think what we have to do is that we have to, once we identify the houses.
Yes.
Then we have to see if the person that not having garbage picked up, if they're the owner, or if they're renting. Then if they're renting, then we know that we tag it that way, then we go after the owner of the house, as opposed to going after the renter.
I agree. Thank you, that wasn't just my follow-up to that question. Thanks.
Dean and Barbara White, Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, we have an ordinance and a resolution. At the appropriate time, I'll have Trista Hudson come up and go through that. We went through this at the workshop, but just have her give a thumbnail on these two when it's time.
Special projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple things real quick. Our first Juneteenth meeting will be next week, next Thursday, March 23rd, 11:00 a.m. It's going to be here at Town Hall. And again, I offer out to any Maryville resident that's interested in being a part of the committee, to please come out next Thursday, and if you know of anyone that would like to be a vendor, please get that information to Mrs. Shine, so that we can start looking at the vendors. I will be reaching out to the vendors from last year, because the majority of them said that they wanted to return this year, so we want, we're going to reach out to them and, as well as add some new vendors to this year's festivities. So, please contact Mrs. Shine if you're interested in being on the committee.
Mr. Hardaway, when's our date again, just for the audience, please?
For the first meeting?
For Juneteenth?
Juneteenth is June the 17th.
Right.
It'll be from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the community center.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And then, don't forget, May the 9th, Municipal Day here at Town Hall for our council meeting then. We still have our 4th of July fireworks on July the 3rd, and our 4th of July parade on the next day. So we're looking for a great time for those things. There'll be other events forthcoming, but that, that gets us at least till July. Thank you.
Mr. Hardaway, the 3rd of July fireworks are going to be at the high school again this year, is that right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to department and commission reports, Lake County Southern Waste Management. Mr. White is our representative.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, the meeting is this Thursday, so we meet bi-monthly, so I will not probably be able to present a report until after we go, we have this meeting this week.
Great, thank you.
So I guess that goes, no report.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, NERCSE, Mr. Hardaway.
Our meeting is Thursday as well, Mr. President.
Very good. Mr. Reardon, is there any report for Stormwater Management?
No, sir, not at this point.
South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
I want to remind the council that Thursday, the 16th, 6 o'clock to 8:00 p.m., at Culinary Misfits in Crown Point, the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority will be hosting a legislative update. And our next meeting is actually just before this event.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Fire territory, Mr. Minchuck or Mr. Spann?
We have a meeting scheduled for the 22nd.
Okay. Department head reports. I see Lisa's here from Parks Department. Hi.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know that we have a big MMA fight coming up on this coming Saturday from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., and then the following weekend, we have the gymnastics competition over in our facility. I'm not sure the times on that one.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all that's going on this month.
Okay. Police Chief Newses.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to touch on the ordinances. I know we kind of talked about them, and I wanted everybody else to know, we're still working with our ordinances. We're going through and making sure that we have the proper wording and whatnot in them, so we can enforce them, and, you know, make them to the point where we can use them to address the problems that we have. So, I've been going out with some of the ordinance officers and driving around and spotting out different issues that I see are a problem, so we've been looking at it, and we're, we're working on finding solutions. Some of them are easy, some of them, we just issue citations or ordinance violations to the property owner, and then sometimes, if it's a vehicle that's violating, we'll do both, but that's what we've been doing. As a update on the animal control officer, our time for application just closed, so we had, it looks like two, maybe three, applications for the animal control position, and we're going to get moving forward with that as well. Tonight, just wanted everybody to know, if you see some extra police activity throughout the town of Maryville, they have the joint agency task force going, where it's going to be a blitz with several different agencies throughout Lake County, just going out and doing proactive police work, anywhere from Maryville to Gary to, I believe Hammond as well, is what they're going to get, but.
So don't be driving home, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or coming here.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I did have a question for Chief here.
Mr. White.
Chief, in the terms of when we have the communities helping us to do blitz and things, so primarily, are they on like the main streets, or are they any parts of the neighborhoods that, because I think that's, that's where some issues are. I know we can see the big issues on Broadway and Taff Street, but inside the communities, is there anything they'll be doing with that?
Sure, when, they usually call me and ask me what areas we're having issues with, and I, I address those areas, and that's the areas that they saturate into.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Shine, anything to add besides your BZA action later?
No, Mr. President, not at this time.
Angie Chilcutt, Economic Development.
Thank you. We diligently been working, fielding multiple inquiries for development coming to the town of Maryville, and that's keeping us very busy, very exciting. The interest there, the interest level is pretty, pretty high. Also, so we welcome that, and we continue, we want to continue to grow. Also, an update on our video, it's, I'm so glad to say it's finally done. I actually received the final version today, so we'll be working on a plan and a process to roll that out to everyone and get our marketing exposure out there.
Great. Mr. Reardon, anything to add?
Sir, thank you. A couple of things. You've heard it mentioned before, I think Councilman Pettit took the lead on this. He announced that the 1 million square foot project out there on Mississippi through Crowe Holdings is coming up out of the ground. I just want to let everybody know that there's a great story in the current issue of the Northwest Indiana Business Magazine. The header is "Maryville Welcomes 1 Million Square Foot Project." And if you haven't had an opportunity, I would encourage everybody to go out there. It's a. It's really significant. It's a sight to behold and just imagine what that building is going to look like once finished and teeming with opportunity and employees and companies. It's exciting. The other thing I need to comment on, and there's flyers up here, we do have a name for our comp plan. We've talked about a comp plan, talked about it. And the name of our comp plan is Maryville Momentum. And everyone in this room is invited to our kickoff meeting. That kickoff meeting will be 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, March 23rd, at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, 6600 Broadway. This is the first of perhaps 10 meetings that we will host. We're really excited. A lot of time and effort has been spent to get us to this point and now really the hard work begins. And I can't say this enough and you'll hear it throughout the process. While we have high expectations and hopes for this plan, it will not succeed. It will not be the plan that it should be, that this community deserves without your input throughout the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have a first reading ordinance, Ordinance 23-12. The ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana authorizing additional appropriations in the 2023 budget, specifically the general fund, Department 6, and authorizing a reduction of appropriations in the 2023 budget, specifically the Parks Nonreverting Fund.
What you have before you is the first of two items on your agenda today to reorganize the Parks Department, which includes the Dean and Barbara White Community Center budget. Part of that, as you see in the middle of the page on 2312, is an additional appropriation for the line item for the Parks Maintenance Crew. That additional appropriation will allow three members of the staff to be paid from the same line so that things are organized in a better fashion. Below that, the second, the bottom half of the page, which is the entirety then of the reduction, is, again, in the goal of organizing the Parks Department budget a little bit better, getting things more in line with the values that are truly needed, reducing some of the various line items so that the total budget comes down to 1.4 million. This reduction, by the way, does not take away from the operational plans that Torrance has for the department and the center.
And this doesn't affect any current employees that we already have at the center, is that right?
That is completely true.
Very good. Mr. Pettit, do you have a motion for us?
I have a motion, Mr. President, to approve Ordinance 23-12.
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mr. Hardaway for approval on first reading, Ordinance Number 23-12. Open for discussion.
Mr. President, just a comment to everyone in the audience and everyone watching the video. I hope everyone keeps in mind what this council has tried to do over the last four years to provide an outstanding facility. If you've not been there, I strongly, as Pat said, I strongly encourage you. Lisa, Torrance, Keisha, Barb Young, all of our staff do an outstanding job there. We've had wonderful events there. Governor Holcomb has been here. It's a learning experience. There are growing pains. That's why we have Trista to help us financially. We have Bob Swentz financially to help us on the bonding. Please understand, we're trying to provide a service to the town. It's not intended to strap anybody or cause any anguish or anything. This is for our children, this is for the residents, and we've taken great strides. And I want to thank you, Trista, for everything you and Torrance and Lisa, the staff have done to get this thing going. We've never been in the community center business. This is brand new to us. So I hope everyone understands that and gives it time to mature. Everyone is very proud, including the people that gave us the $10 million gift. The White family is watching this. They're extremely proud of what we've done out there and hopefully we'll continue a long relationship with them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Madam Clerk Treasure.
I'd just like to make mention to Trista if she would like to get with our bookkeeper. There are eight line items listed here that do not have the dollar amount shown, so it may be a different dollar amount that we need to approve.
You mean items in the current budget that are not here?
No, I mean items on the ordinance, for example, labor.
You say not shown, do you mean are different instead of shown?
Yes. They are less than what's shown.
I'm not sure exactly what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Okay. For example, contractual services, $50,000. It has $40,502 available.
So this reduction is as to the budget itself?
I understand.
Not the remaining appropriation left?
The amount of the reduction.
Right. There will be some other transfers-
There would need to be.
-to help adjust, I think, what you're referring to.
All right. I was just advised to ask you to meet with Aurelio.
For sure, absolutely, yep. And that's coming as soon as council addresses the ordinance itself.
Okay.
Did you want to read those others into the record at all?
If you'd like. I don't have to. If you want me to, okay. Labor, Parks Nonreverting Labor, $24,025 and 38 cents. Finance, $25,378 and 25 cents. Contractual Services, again, $40,502 and 70 cents. Park Time Staff, $10,815 and 75 cents. Recreation Coordinator, $17,306 and 23 cents. Part-Time Staff, $70,363 and 81 cents. Subcontractors, $14,019 and 20 cents. And the second one for subcontracting, $37,992 and 50 cents.
So for our purposes tonight, those figures, we don't really need to worry about adjusting those, right? Those are what the balances are in the fund, right?
Right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Vice President Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzleck?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes. Seven ayes and motion carries. Is there any need for us to suspend the rules and read this on a second reading, either Attorney Svetnov or Trista?
No, sir. We need a notice published for the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinances, we have Ordinance 23-11. The ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana authorizing additional appropriations in the 2023 budget. Mr. Reardon, would you like to give us a background on this? You kind of did it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So this ordinance will allow us to pay out of this fund that was established as a result of the generous participation of the many attendees at our recent event, the Black History Month Celebration Dinner. And this is a fund that, you know, we hope will be sustained and available for years to come.
Very good, thank you. Chair, entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck for approval of Ordinance 23-11 on second and final reading. Open for discussion.
Mr. President, I'd like to say one thing is to Mr. Reardon, whatever the balance is, that's going to be the balance that we start toward our scholarship program, if I'm not mistaken, that we'll get with, that's going to run through the Legacy Foundation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? This is a second reading ordinance. I'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment tonight on Ordinance 23-11? The amount of the ordinance is $51,875. Seeing no public comment, Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Vice President Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Span?
Aye.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzleck?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Epstein.
President Bella?
Yes. Six with one abstention, the motion passes.
Thank you.
And we will pass that around for proper signatures tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to resolutions tonight, we have Resolution 23-07, the resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana transferring monies within the 2023 budget, the general fund, Department 6, and within the 2023 budget, Parks and Nonreverting Funds. This is a companion resolution to what we did earlier. Trista?
As Council President Bella stated, this is a companion resolution to the ordinance we just discussed. It is taking various line items where funds are not needed in the budget itself to transfer them to areas where the money is needed, both in the general fund and the nonreverting fund. Again, the goal, organizing the budget a little bit better, getting the budget amounts into line with the actual expenditures that are needed.
Thank you. Mr. Pettit, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. I make a motion to approve Resolution 23-07.
Second.
You have a motion from Mr. Pettit with a second by Mrs. Yuzleck for approval of Resolution 23-07. Variety of line items decreasing and a variety of line items increasing, the net effect is zero. Open for discussion. Hearing none, this is a resolution, a roll call vote is sufficient. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Voice vote, yeah, yeah, sorry. Moving on to the American Rescue Plan AP voucher, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. AP voucher for tonight is $18,658.05. Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Span for approval of the accounts payable voucher for the ARP funds. The amount's $18,658 and a nickel. Any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
I'm supporting the voucher, but what I'd like to see in the future, I know we've been doing a lot of home repairs using the American Rescue Plan. Possibly in the future, I think we should look at some other options for using the American Rescue Plan. For an example, I would prefer that we spend it on people. Not meaning that people that own homes are not people, but for example, we have a huge, very huge problem here in Northwest Indiana, and it's called the black maternity death rate between black mothers and their children are dying, the worst in Indiana. And it's basically during the maternity period that they're dying. So I would like to see in the future that if there's some kind of way that we can find out why are these women dying at the rate that they're dying at, actually, I picked up the article from the state of Indiana newspaper, Indianapolis newspaper, that said Northwest Indiana has the worst rate of black maternity infant and young women. So I just want to find out why is these things happening? Is there some dollars that we can study the issue or is there some dollars we can make it for prenatal care or whatever is killing these young people? But right now, it's a lot. And to be honest with you, I think they said that we were the third in the nation, not just Maryville, but Northwest Indiana was the third in the nation. So I would like to look into that real soon to see if we can save some lives. Thank you.
We'll ask Mr. Hardaway to take that under advisement for your committee, if you're okay? Thank you, Mr. White. Moving on tonight to the BZA and Large Gathering Actions, we have one BZA item. Ms. Shine?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one BZA item from Crossworld Plaza. Mr. Anderson? Crossworld Plaza is the applicant and the petitioner. The address is 6110 Broadway. The zoning district is an M2 industrial zoning district, and they are requesting a variance of use approval to allow a retail store on 20.606 acres in the M2 limited industrial corridor zoning district. Petitioners proposing to have a Foreman Mills Clothing Factory warehouse at the 50,000-square-foot vacant site. The site would be located near the west end of the plaza. The mailing address would be 6110B Broadway. Petitioners states that this store would help revitalize an underutilized plaza. The addition of this store will invigorate the plaza and not negatively affect the community. Utilities are already in place from the previous business entity and the egress and ingress will not be altered. The proposed business would join other locations nationwide. Foreman Mills Clothing Store offering off-price apparel in men's, ladies, kids, and toys, shoes, and home goods. The hours of operation are typically 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Fridays and 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and they are closed on Sunday. There will be approximately 100 employees. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance. Petitioner has now provided a lease to Attorney Svetnov, and this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you.
Free tonight.
I think Sheila summed it up pretty well. The lease is in negotiation. The lease was prepared by the tenant, which is a good sign. That means that they're interested in spending money on the project. The sprinkler system, which has been an issue, there's been a contract led on that. There is a lot, if Joe's had an opportunity to flip through that lease at all, there's a lot of requirements of the landlord to bring the center up as far as that suite, so there's going to require some additional funds. But it's $50,000, it's right next to Ruler, and it should help to fill in the little stores when you have a big store.
Explain to me, 100 employees, that seems like a dream come true.
Well, this is, you know, as she described, it's a store in which they have merchandise, new merchandise for sale, and so basically they need employees. That's their estimate. It's 50,000 per feet, so that's a big store.
Yeah, it is big, very big.
Think about a grocery store.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pettit?
Mr. Anderson, Rich in the packet under Exhibit B, it's the red store that's highlighted, correct?
It's the arrow, yes, it's next to Ruler. It's on the back.
Ruler's right up on 61st Avenue. Am I reading this map wrong?
No, well, it's right next to Ruler, meaning it would be south of Ruler.
And east.
On the west side, the very west side of the plaza, and it would-
The old Walgreens?
No, no, no.
No, 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 on the other side, on the other lane.
It was the Aldi's, actually.
Yeah.
The door says Aldi's on it, if you were looking today.
Okay.
It's been 100 years ago. So Ruler's is on that side. It's the building that runs north and south.
All right, well, I'll give you, Rich, you and I have known each other a long time. I'll give you my two cents because we went through this once before. We're granting a use fareings, ladies and gentlemen, for a property that's owned M2. At the request of the owner, we rezoned it to M2 to house a 250,000-square-foot industrial building, which has absolutely no business going on this property. And Rich, you know I voted against it. I'm going to vote for this. In fact, I'll make the motion to approve this because this center needs to be commercial. It doesn't need to be industrial, and I would advise you tell Mr. Israel my thoughts on that, please. This needs to be rezoned back to commercial so he can market it properly. There's no way an industrial building's going up there, Rich. You and I both know that. So we need to fix that.
Just to remember, part of the ordinance that was passed had a reversionary clause in it in September of 2022.
Mm-hmm.
The council at that time didn't want to revert it back to C2 because- The council at that time didn't want to revert it back to C-two, because they said they were working on a multi-review of zoning. So the petitioner has already asked for that, and that was basically kind of sidelined, we'll say.
All right.
So, I mean...
Comp plan coming.
Comp, comp plan's coming, exactly. And we can address that then. Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the use ferience approval for sixty-one-ten Broadway.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Pettit, but the second by Mr. White for approval of this petitioner, special exception, M-two limited industrial corridor district. Open for discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
This is my area, and I am welcoming this type of business to kind of lift that place up, because we, it's needed, just like Sean said. And Sean's been involved in this situation. But I was going to say the same thing to you, Mr. Anderson, was that Mr. Israel has to get this thing turned back to commercial. Retail, I'm sorry, retail. Because what it does is slow the process down tremendously when people got to wait for it to go to the BZA.
And that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight, even though I don't have a signed lease, because if I keep going with this, Foreman Mills is going to leave. And so I've got to have these pieces put together, and sometimes the pieces have to fit.
Mr. Anderson, what do we need to do with your clients to start the process of getting this back into retail? Because other than that, Mr. President, we're going to be coming up here...
The council has the right to revert it back pursuant to the ordinance from two thousand and eighteen by a vote. It's right in that ordinance. I'd be happy to sit down with whoever wants to talk about it, but that's what...
Well, yeah, I like to get that on the agenda, because I just think this kind of just...
Well, it'd be very helpful with all the small, I was out there again today, and there's a lot of small vacancies in between. Trader Vix is now open, they have a sign up, so they're starting, but there's space on the other side of the dollar store that's vacant all the way down, there's space next to this store. And if I have to come back every time to get another variance for this, it slows down that process, it discourages people, and they go look somewhere else, because you know, the little tenant, he needs to make money.
Sure. You know, Mr. Anderson, here's why I'm saying that, not because I'm a councilman, but sometimes we have to do other things besides being a councilman. And by me having interest in the Crossworld Plaza to kind of renovate it or redevelopment, actually, I was looking, and other people I know are looking at some of those smaller stores. Actually, we're kind of starting that process real soon, so I will get back with you, but again, I would like to come back to the fact that we don't need to go through three hearings, basically, too, even though it takes a month, it takes a lot of time off the clock.
Costs lawyer fees, too, so my client would be happy.
Well, maybe we need to stall it a little bit more, so you can make some money.
No, I'd rather that we got it taken care of.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Bearden, please add this topic to our March twenty-eighth Town Council workshop that we're going to have at four o'clock. And we'll discuss it, and then Joe, get us your opinion on what we need to do to change this back to commercial.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this topic? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you very much.
Moving on tonight to new business, any new business before us? Hearing none, old business, any old business? You're probably referring to open to the public, and we'll get to that in a minute, is that what you meant?
Public comment.
We have no special presentations tonight, so public comment. Please approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Please approach the microphone here, the podium, and then state your name and address for the record, guys, I'd be happy to hear from you.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Monica Burke, and my question is for President Rick Bella and also for the Chief of Police. I was wondering where we're at on the animal control building situation, and why they didn't hire Officer Foster from the Gary Police Department for animal control? Because I heard that he applied.
But we really don't, yeah, we really don't discuss personnel matters out in the public like this, so, I think we're reviewing applications right now, we haven't made a decision yet.
Okay, and then what are you guys going to do in regards to the animal control building? And have you guys found any shelters or rescues that would be willing to take the animals from Maryville?
We have not, I'll let the chief speak to that, he's checked with many, many locations. Chief?
Sure, no problem. I've been checking and calling various shelters and humane societies, there's a couple that haven't given me an answer yet, they haven't given me a no, which is good, but everything's at max capacity right now. It's not just a problem that Maryville's having, it's a problem that a lot of the municipalities are having, they just can't find placement for dogs, because people are unfortunately dumping dogs at an alarming rate now. One of the things that we are looking at doing is we are looking at creating an ordinance that's going to, something's going to be subjected to a big fine if they get caught dumping dogs in Maryville.
Oh, good, they should.
So that's one of the things that we're working on, but as far as shelters, they're all full, but some of them are willing to help, but that's all still being discussed and worked on.
And what about an animal control building for, to house the animals here in Maryville?
That's something I couldn't, I don't have, I couldn't tell you about.
Mr. Minchuck, do you want to...
Jeff, you want to take that one?
Yes.
We have a couple ideas stirring on that, and we'll share that with you.
We've had several meetings with several different people in reference to building a shelter right here in town to house our own needs. Of course, if we build a new building, or when we build a new building, that's going to take some time, so we're going to have to think of a permanent plan and a temporary plan. We are currently in the process of doing that, so we don't want to come out and say what it is, because things could go backwards or forwards at this time. Hopefully, within a couple weeks here, maybe a little bit more, I'll have a definite answer for you, but though, I can assure you, those wheels are turning. Things are happening, it's not going to the wayside whatsoever. It's just a matter of what we get and when we get it.
And you guys are going to make that into an ordinance to fine people hefty when they do, when they are caught dumping animals at an alarming rate?
Yeah, if somebody's physically caught dumping an animal, oh yeah, that'll definitely be dealt with.
And are they going to be arrested, or they just going to be cited?
It depends on the situation, man.
Yeah, mostly cited, it's not really a breaking a law type effect, you know, issue.
That's not considered animal abuse and neglect?
That's why I said it depends on the situation.
Yeah, depends what they're doing.
I was just curious, thank you so much.
Thank you, Monica. We'll keep you guys informed, believe me.
Thank you.
But the wheels are turning, which is way more than we were a month ago, right? And I will, I will share this with you, we talked about funding tonight.
Yes, we did.
In the redevelopment commission workshop, so that was actually on the agenda, and Mr. Pettit brought it up, and we discussed it, so...
And that's good, because I would like to change the passage to Paul.
Yeah.
There is a request, and we truly appreciate that you can bring it to us.
Sure.
So we thank you very much.
So it was discussed tonight, too, that we're still looking for whomever who can take dogs, even temporarily.
We can afford to build the building, and what Jeff has worked on is Pausville, we can do that through the redevelopment commission. The problem, and why we're not pulling the trigger, is what we would refer to as the operation, the O and M, the operation and maintenance, and we need an entity to partner with the town that can, that can staff and handle that operation.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not just a physical building, we have to worry about everything that goes with that, of course.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Do we have some preliminary costs on that?
No, we don't yet, Leonard.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sir. You bet. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, President Bella, City Council members, community members, and esteemed guests. My name is Macy O'Rainey, I'm a Maryville resident of the Prairie Creek Housing Association, as well as Indiana Trio President. Before I say anything else, I want to use a moment of privilege to say Happy International Women's History Month. It's an opportunity to recognize and celebrate all of our females that have stood on the front lines for justice, equality, and sustain our democratic way of life, so I want to recognize International Women's History Month. Also, I come to stand in front of you, not only as Indiana Trio President and a Maryville resident, but also to offer a weather forecast as it relates to the educational climate of the city of Maryville and the state of Indiana. We have a current bill in the House right now, sponsored by Earl Harris of New Chicago and Senator Eddie Milton of Gary. Everything wrapped around Twenty-First Century Scholars. As you know all too well, that student loan debt is at an all-time high in this nation, and being able to take advantage of what the state of Indiana is offering for our young people to transition from high school to college, being part of the Twenty-First Century Scholars is landmark legislation that offers free room, board, and tuition for Indiana residents that sign up for Twenty-First Century Scholars. And in the House right now, they are lobbying for auto enrollment, which means that students can enroll for Twenty-First Century Scholars all year round, the enrollment is concurrent. So we're looking for a final decision for approval of Twenty-First Century Scholars that will, of course, encompass tuition, room, and board at all public Indiana-based universities. It has everything to do with an educated workforce in the state of Indiana, and it's so important that we keep our thumb to the pulse of the quality of education of our young people in the town of Maryville, because it has everything to do with an educated and skilled workforce now and in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macy O'Rainey.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Paul Mulligan, Ward Six, the Preserve subdivision off Eighty-Fifth and Mississippi. There comes a point after so many calls to code enforcement that one asks oneself, "Am I that neighbor who's turning into a nuisance, calling and calling about the same things?" What I'm talking about is, in our subdivision, it's gotten out of control as far as cars. We have about ninety-five to a hundred pretty nice homes with two-and-a-half car garages at each home. But some people have elected to use those garages as storage areas and park in the street instead. They don't even park on the apron, park in the street. Thanks to our councilmen, we had enacted an ordinance where you can only park on one side of the street. Some people ignore that, and they've been ticketed, and code enforcement has urged them to cooperate, but they don't. Some people are so belligerent and blatantly ignorant, they choose to pay the fine or ignore the ordinances that you have put in place anyway. This has really gotten out of hand, because it lends itself to getting in the way of our safety, fire protection, police. The school bus can't come down through there if too many cars are parked, the school bus can no longer turn around in my cul-de-sac, because new neighbors park out in the cul-de-sac. And you try to talk to them and reason with them, and they really get angry, and it's causing friction between neighbors, and nobody wants that. Nobody wants to tell you what to do with your garage. If you want to store your furniture in there instead of your car, people have come in and decided that that's what they want to do. I am suggesting, for the sake of peace, harmony, uniformity, and common sense, that the Maryville Town Council come up with an educational program that urges people to buy in to the idea that proper parking and the number of cars you have helps everybody. Limit what you want to do versus what is good for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, sir. I did have a question, a question, when you said these, the garages are packed with, like, storage units, are these attached to the homes?
Yes.
So does that create a fire hazard for their home?
We already had fire in the neighborhood, didn't we, Paul?
Oh, yeah, they're still working on that house.
They're still working on that house.
So there's a potential that it could be another fire there?
Well, this was fireworks, Leonard, they put the fireworks in the trash can and put the trash can next to the house, and it went up. Yeah, it was quite a Fourth of July.
I know people in our neighborhood who spend in excess of two thousand to three thousand dollars every Fourth of July buying their own fireworks, and this town, this town budgets, what, thirty thousand dollars to put on a display, and you can get in there for five bucks? Come on.
Yeah, the reason, I'm sorry, Mr. President, the reason I'm asking this question is because I didn't know if it was something that our, maybe amendment of an ordinance saying that you can't have it a hundred percent for, especially if it's creating, say, if a house catches on fire on the inside, and you don't have no way out but to go through the garage, and now all of a sudden, you've got all this stuff out here, it really creates a very dangerous situation, not only for the homeowners, but even having our guys come out there to address that. So I just maybe in the, in the future, we want to see...
Yeah, well, we, my cul-de-sac alone, Paul, we had those people, those brand-new people came into Eighty-seventh, and were parking on the grass. I sent Vicki out, I gave them a couple weeks, I knew they were new, and they're starting to park on the driveway. The question becomes to Mr. Svetinoff is, the definition of a garage in an accessory building, and whether or not we can, we can regulate that. Again, if it's attached, it's part of the house. If it's detached, it's an accessory building, and can we, can we regulate that on private property? I don't, I don't know that we can.
Just one more thing, Sean, I'm hearing you, but regulating and forcing people and fining people and all of that is one thing, but don't we need to take it a step further and, as I said, get people to buy in to the idea somehow that what they do affects everybody else? I told my wife Denise three years ago, so watch, watch where this is going. Somebody's going to drive a semi-tractor in here, and sure enough, three months ago, there's a semi-tractor parked three doors from me. A limousine, a small bus. Some guy's got a S-class Mercedes parked in front of the sign that says, "No parking this side of the street." Just total defiance. And when you get people with that kind of attitude that have unlimited revenue, money's not going to do it. Something else has to happen. I don't have the answer, but I know amongst all of these intellects, we can come up with something.
Well, thank you, I think. I think, thank you for that.
Shonda Flowers, sixty-one thirty-seven Connecticut Street. Interesting enough, just to piggyback off of this gentleman, not just that conversation, but on what I'm hearing, I'm excited that the police department is expanding, that's wonderful, and with that, I'm sure we're going to get even more tickets now that we have different communities that's coming together to make sure we're enforcing what some of the codes that are being violated, such as some of the ones that they're speaking about. I just want to also put out there, as you all are considering and meeting with regards to temporary shelters for animals, that you also add to that maybe possibly coming back to the table with the court, so we can work together to try to enforce some of the ordinances that we are updating, some of the ordinances that we probably need to improve, as well as working with the police department in an effort to try to help gentlemen such as this, because we do have ordinances that are already on the books. And so with the lack of conversation that we've had with regards to counseling the court, which is why we're in the current situation we're in, it's just never too late to possibly see what can the court do for the town, because it sounds like as we continue to grow, when you think of citizens that are now confused when officers from Maryville are pulling them over and writing tickets and sending payments to the court, that in essence, I took payments over to Hammond, because that's indeed where their tickets ended up. So maybe we can, again, possibly come to the table, it's just never too late to try to work together for the betterment of our community, along with our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Brian Masars, 201 East 68th Place. I'd like to address the idea that the community center is a business. The community center isn't really a business. And part of the issue is we're talking about hiring more people over there. And I've been over there quite a bit. I've tried to involve myself over there. And there's a lot of nice equipment there, but the one thing that there is not there is a person to help you learn how to use free weights, how to use the machines, how to safely use the climbing wall. To say that this community center is for the children is, it's actually for the children who can afford to pay to play on the basketball court. Because if you want to use the basketball court, you have to pay. There are certain things that you can use for free and there are certain things you can't use for free. There are certain times you can be there, there are certain times you can't be there. And while we have this large building that provides a space for us to do positive things, there aren't a lot of clubs that meet there. There aren't a lot of people who come in because people really don't even understand what the rules are and when you can be there, when you can't be there. And it, it suffers to the detriment of the other parks. Rosenbaum Park is not the only park in Maryville and it's not the only one that has a shelter that is in disrepair. As a matter of fact, the bike trail over by Lowe's, where there is a culvert that goes underneath behind Lowe's under I-65, there are huge cracks in the ceiling of that culvert. What point in time is someone going to actually go out there and look at what it would take to fix that? We need to start.
Which culvert, Brian? Under I-65?
Yes.
That's the box culvert. That's state right-of-way. That's state's responsibility. It's their bridge. So we can con, we'll contact Endot and have them go out there, absolutely. Yeah, that's, but that, that would be their responsibility, I believe, Pat, wouldn't it?
Well, we'll check into it.
We'll check into it, yeah. I didn't realize it was, that's, that's a sect, there's sections, just like on the Erie-Lacawanna, US 30, going over the Erie-Lacawanna, it's the same kind of construction.
My, my point is, is that there are people who actually work for the Parks Department who have actually acknowledged that that is a problem. So who is responsible for fixing it and whatnot is fantastic, but the problem's been identified and we need to move forward with a solution before people get hurt. And the whole idea of having an animal control shelter, but we don't have anyone to operate it, it's the same way as having a, a gymnasium without any coaches or anybody to tell you how to use a gym equipment. We're not, we need to start thinking a little bit more outside the box and towards, you know, how we can positively impact the thing. And the gentleman here, it, it's nice to have education and because people need to be educated. We don't communicate very well. I've been here for years now complaining about the communication. It's pretty simple. There's cars on the streets. You give them a couple of violations, fantastic. Three strikes, you're out. Start towing the cars. Our, our snowplows need to get through, our garbage trucks need to get through, our buses need to get through. Just start towing the cars. And it's, it seems pretty simple. Thank you.
Well, Lisa, do you want to comment at all on his comments about the center? Since we do have a trainer there and we have different things.
I mean, we do have a personal trainer that comes in there now. We also, I know personally, I know how to, you know, teach people to go on the climbing wall. Unfortunately, you know, there are times where our staff is overwhelmed with things that they are doing. So it is a little hard sometimes to have the people that we need there to do the climbing wall. But as far as learning the equipment, you can, there's, there's signs on the equipment to show how to do it, but there are also people that we can reach out to and we're trying to get them to come in and do like a, a training where you can come in and learn how to use the equipment. I just need to get with him. It's been very hard because with his schedule and with everything that we've had going on here, it's been very hard to do that. But we can, I can, I can reach out to Midwest Fitness that supplies our equipment and, and maybe have him come out and maybe we can do a couple of, you know, night, nighttime or daytime training sessions on the equipment. I can check into it for you.
The point is, no disrespect to you or the Parks Department, the point is this, we should have someone who is paid to be there to do this, not worry about having somebody from somewhere else come in and, and once a week or whatever. We should have someone, when I as a resident walk into the Parks Department, into that building and say, "Hey, I, I want to know how to use this machine or I want to know how to safely ride the bike." "Oh, this is how you do it." We don't even have training videos where like, "Oh, here, if you watch this online or whatnot, this is how you use the equipment." Nothing. And so I stopped coming to the center because it's like, there's a lot of nice equipment, but I don't really know how to use it. There are people there that don't know how to use it, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Eric January. I live at 3031 West 58th Avenue. And he hit a hot button with me at the park, the community center. I've been working out my entire life and I'll never forget when I was here at a community meeting and mentioned that the community center was going to be free. And I mentioned at that particular time that we couldn't afford free. I go to the community center and one of the things that I see is that a lot of the equipment, although it is new, is already in disrepair. So I really believe that we need to revisit that free to the community. When you go to Crown Point, Highland, Shererville, every one of those communities charges a fee to their members and non-members. I don't believe that the town can afford it, particularly considering the fact that we're considering raising our sales taxes by one percent. Me, I'm a CPA by profession, I help people with money. And one of the things that irks me, because I've been helping people reduce their taxes, but on the other hand of the spectrum, the town is taxing people. So it's like a constant battle between government and individuals.
That's not really accurate, sir. We're not raising the sales tax by.
Well, it's food, food and beverage taxes. You've got to propose. And I don't know if the Senate or the governor has actually signed it, but.
No, not at all. It hasn't even cleared the, the House yet.
Right, but just the fact that we had to ask for it. I believe there are some things that we can do before we have to impose a tax on everybody that's in the community and within the community to fund something that people are using it, should be funding it for. So before we ask everybody to pay for it, we should be doing some practical things ourselves. So the, the thing in regards to training, if people were paying a fee, or actually you can have personal trainers that can work out of that place and show you how to use the equipment on, on a regular basis. There are different things you can do just outside, we just have to think outside of the box. We can't just think about taxing the spend. Because the community center is lovely now, but I do, I'm absolutely opposed to a one percent tax. Lake County opposed a one, implemented a one percent tax when I moved here. And now we're talking about a one percent tax. I'm concerned that the next thing that's going to happen is our property taxes are going to go up. And it's going to make us less competitive to the other areas. Most of the people that I have that are friends that are moving from Illinois, when they talk about moving to this Northwest Indiana area, they're talking about Shererville, Crown Point, and every other place besides Maryville. And if we have taxes that are comparable to Illinois, this is not going to be the destination for those dollars.
With all due respect, sir, we have the third lowest tax rate in Lake County in Maryville.
Yes, but.
We have attractive businesses. We have the first million-square-foot building. That company picked Maryville for a reason. All those, all those companies in Amerplex picked it for a reason.
Yes, you're giving tax breaks.
We just heard in our redevelopment commission, we just heard in our redevelopment.
That's why we're doing it.
Hang on, sir. We just heard in our redevelopment workshop that our tax rate went from 2.47 down to 2.44. Doesn't help our TIF districts, but that's what was reported by our financial advisor. So the tax rate in Maryville has in fact gone down.
It is going down temporarily now. But what direction is it going to go in if we can keep implementing tax breaks to larger corporations? Because you're basically shifting the burden from the taxpayer, from those individuals to the homeowners, where somebody's got to pay for the road. Somebody's going to have to pay to put the salt down on the road. One of the things that also irritates me since I've been here, we do not adequately salt our streets. And from people, from people that work in the salts department, we've been ordering the same amount of salt, it sounds like, for decades because we can't afford to pay more. So we can't afford to give, just give away things to individuals and corporations. Everybody should be forced to pay their fair share of operating the town of Maryville. And the reason that people are moving here from Illinois is because their taxes are ridiculous. That's why I moved here. So if we didn't have to give them a tax break, they would have came here with or without a tax break. Maryville is not some horrible town where we got to basically give somebody something to move here. This is just Northwest Indiana is a gem. We don't have to give it away. And if we're giving people ten-year runways in order to start paying a full amount of taxes, that's transferring, ultimately is going to transfer the burden to taxpayers, the homeowners. Me, I'm not getting a tax break. I own a business. I've got several employees that work for me. I've been here for eight years. I've never asked for a tax break because I believe people need to be treated equally. So when they come to the community center, they, they should pay. I don't care if it's $10 a month. Somebody should pay something so that we can afford to maintain that facility without charging an excess or, or charging everybody else to pay for somebody else's bills and make the community less attractive to other people and businesses. So I can go on and on. It's just, uh, it's just a hot topic, a hot-button issue. The community center is lovely and I thank you all for building and taking that initiative to do it, but we need to think outside of the taxing spend box in terms of how we fund it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, President. This is my first time being at a town council meeting, so I'm a little nervous.
Don't be nervous.
I've been putting in public records requests. Now, I've put in one, I've gotten one back. Now, I've been putting one in for four months. I haven't heard a word from anyone. Not one single word.
Okay.
Now, what do I need to do to get my public record request?
When you say you've put it in, who are you putting it into and how have you been doing that?
Well, I've been doing it online. I've been doing it through Lynda.
Through what?
Through, uh, Lynda.
Lynda?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've.
That could check into that.
I've put the second one in, in December. This is mid-March. I haven't, haven't heard anything from anybody.
First I'm hearing about it, we'll certainly look into it, though. Yeah, you can sit around afterwards and give your name to Pat.
Well, I can give him the record request right now.
Oh, that'd be great. After the meeting, let's do that.
I have it in my hand right now.
Let's do it after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Your request for documents, did you do it under the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you have no response?
Well, I've gotten a few responses. The last month and a half, crickets. Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
No response back from the, I, I, I want to, I don't want to say town manager, but she says she works in town management. I haven't heard back from her. I've actually called her. She transferred me to the lawyer. The lawyer told me to send it to him, which is not the process. The process is to go to her, then go to him. So I reset it to her. I have heard nothing else since.
Well, we'll look into it. That's all I can say of tonight, sir.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Is there any other public comment tonight? Seeing none, announcements, we have the Plan Commission Public Meeting, March 21st at 6:30. The Juneteenth Committee Meeting on March 23rd. What time was that, Rich?
11 o'clock.
At 11 o'clock AM. The Town Council Workshop at 4 o'clock on the 28th of March. The Town Council Meeting is going to be also on the 28th at 6:30. And Redevelopment Commission Meeting is March 28th at 6:15.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you all.